This meeting of the Burlington Community School District to order. Uh, we will start with the pledge of allegiance brought to us by a couple of Sunnyside Elementary elves.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion to adjourn. We can't do it.
They've been dying to do that since we've had meetings at home, so uh, thanks for indulging. Um, looking for a motion for adoption of agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Alright, uh, moving on to the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, including payment of bills previously paid in the amount of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, sixty-six dollars and forty-two cents, unpaid bills in the amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and eleven cents, and gifts in the amount of five hundred and forty-five dollars for this board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, um, uh, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 All according, same sign. Motion passes. Uh, superintendent's report.
Uh, the Des Moines County COVID number, uh, continued to down over the weekend, which is a positive. It did spike up a little bit today, but we're still, uh, within that, uh, we'd had, uh, the AB schedule going before the last, uh, shutdown. Um, thank you for reading our cabinet notes. Um, this past week, I completed the University of Northern Iowa College of Education Leadership Camp. Uh, this class gives me the necessary, uh, education to hold the new evaluators. Um, certification. I'm glad to have that done and out of the way. Greg and I held our pre-board meeting with Board President and Vice President. On December seventh, thirteenth, we, uh, finalized the tentative agenda that is before you today. Um, hopefully you all were able to read the email I sent you, uh, at, uh, seven thirty-four on December tenth from the National Center for Educational Statistics, NAP, concerning why COVID has rendered standardized testing scientifically insignificant. I also believe that clicking on the link of the director's letter is significant in that it shows, um, how COVID has affected, uh, all the states in the United States. Uh, the state of Iowa does intend to, uh, uh, collect data. Um, Corey, is there anything that you would like to add to that, since that's kind of your bailiwick?
Uh, nothing specific at this point, just that, you know, we've talked before about data this year is going to have to be interpreted with any, uh, with a lot of caution after a shutdown, after being closed last year. Um, and, you know, the, the hybrid schedule this year for us and a lot of different learning schedules and student quarantines and absentee rates, um, not just within our districts, but across the country. So the, the NAPE letter that, that Pat was referring to, uh, does a nice job of kind of addressing that at a national level. And like he said, we are still being told by the state to prepare for, um, all of our state level, uh, required testing. Um, so we are, we are getting ready for that despite the, the need for caution.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Uh, speaking of data, I presented Mrs. Butler, Mr. Kane, each are framed the letter. Inside that letter, uh, the class of twenty-twenty-sevens kindergarten assessment data is behind the frame. So Mrs. Butler will open that up in two years and she'll have a longitudinal view of how we've done with these children from grade K all the way up to the eighth grade. Uh, Mr. Kane also received a, uh, a copy of this and he will open his on, uh, in December of twenty-twenty-seven. And that'll give us a view of how we've done with these children all the way from kindergarten through high school. And, uh, the information will be, uh, very telling and I've en- I've encouraged them to, uh, the reason I framed it, so they have to put it up in their office and look at it every day for the next several years. And that way they can't forget about it. It ends up in a drawer and we end up overlooking it. So, uh, I look forward to hearing from them at that time and how Burlington Community School District did from kindergarten through twelfth grade with a set of children. Um, this week I spent a fair amount of time visiting schools. Uh, past week, visiting schools, I was able to watch a lot of online classes. I was able to speak to several of the classes and, uh, much to my chagrin, as Mr. Courtney mentioned, one of the children yelled out, is that Mr. Cohen's voice? So I went over and the teacher had me speak to her class and the kid did tell me, my grandpa knows you. He was in the army with you. So, uh, yes, I get into that age where I no more grandpas than dads. Um, I attended the Des Moines County Quad County Equity Committee meeting where we shared a lot of data and statistics on, uh, uh, disproportionality. The one that stuck out with me the most is they reported that, uh, Des Moines County's population birth to eighteen is down four hundred and eighty-six children. So that's four hundred and eighty-six fewer students. Uh, if this trend continues, uh, we'll have to be looking at right sizing again. Uh, probably twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-seven, somewhere in that area. And again, uh, the open enrollment out, we have that, uh, beaten down and it is getting better. Um, so this is demographics changes and smaller families and fewer children. Um, uh, the Director of Building Grounds, uh, Mr. Krieger, and then also, uh, Raise Group. I would like to, uh, personally, uh, thank them right now and publicly. Uh, they did a phenomenal job working through the schools and making sure we're ready to start today. Uh, one group worked Saturday morning till about, I think, eleven, twelve, uh, something like that. I had to drive my daughter to an airport in Illinois. Uh, when I got back, I did go, uh, look at the high school and again, they did a tremendous job. Um, so we were ready to go this morning. I was able to visit every school today. Uh, teachers were very excited. Children were very excited. Attendance was much higher than I anticipated, which is good, and there were many, many smiles. Um, our next board meeting is, uh, January eleventh. That board meeting will take place at the high school. Socially distanced in the library. Um, any board member who is concerned about COVID, uh, you may, um, attend digitally from your home. Uh, but, uh, the president did speak with me and he did say he would like to try to have the meetings at the high school. Um, since we are having children come to our school and staff come to the school. Um, are there any questions at this time? Aaron, none, Mr.?
Mr. Cohen, I had a question for you. The class of twenty-twenty-seven, is that something, uh, that we are looking to replicate for other classes in the future?
It is, but it would be different. Um, because of twenty-twenty-seven, we had alternative kindergarten. So, uh, a chunk of the kids that scored the lowest would go to an alternative kindergarten. Alternative kindergarten, the hope is to have them caught up and, and go into first grade, but that isn't always the case. Uh, sometimes they come back into, uh, the original kindergarten the following year. Um, it's kind of a early red shirt year. Uh, we no longer do that. So it would be different, but yes, we do plan on replicating it and it's something we should do, uh, every three or four years. And it gives us again, that longitudinal view of what we're doing. Our synchronization efforts and alignments of, uh, of our mission and vision and those type of things and are we having the effect that we're striving to have?
Thank you. Any further questions?
Seeing none, we will, uh, move into new business. Uh, first we have, uh, uh, I'm gonna probably mispronounce it, Verith Trans Transportation. Greg, I will, uh, turn it over to you.
Yes, uh, sending to the board tonight, uh, a proposal from Tyler Technologies. It's with the VersaTrans Transportation Suite. The school district has used VersaTrans for a number of years for our student routing system. And we've been discussing, uh, probably over the past year, looking at installing GPS systems on the buses. Um, a number of districts around us have done so. They've been pleased with the, uh, results of having GPS systems on the buses. Um, so it's something we would like to take a look at. We do think there would be a lot of benefits to the district to have GPSs on the buses. Uh, a couple of things. One, the purchase of the software and systems can be used, uh, with PEPAL funds, but it will result in savings to the general fund. And the basis for that is currently with all of the bus drivers, uh, regular route drivers and substitutes. Anytime we hire someone, each of the drivers will get, run all of the routes. Uh, so there's a significant amount of time and labor spent in training all the drivers with the utilization of GPS systems on the bus. Uh, it won't matter what route they get on. The drivers can just get on the bus and the GPS will, uh, take them through the route. Um, it does interface directly with our, our routing system, so it's, it's, uh, a real-time interface, so changes to the routes will be, can be and will be made immediately. Um, there are also a couple of other things we're looking at with this package. Uh, there is a tracking system for students where the students will have fobs that they will be given. Uh, so it will track when the student gets in and, um, exits the bus. So we'll know who's on the bus and what time they get on and off. And there's also some software involved with this, some reporting software that will help us analyze, you know, number of students on the buses, uh, and help us identify efficiencies, uh, within our routing itself. So I do have Andrew Gorzicki with us tonight. He is with Tyler Technologies. And at this point, I would like to introduce Andrew. Uh, he will, uh, answer some questions for the board and, and give you a little bit more information about what we're looking at.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening, everyone. Also, first off, my name's Andrew Gorzicki. I am your representative here with Tyler Technologies. So for any of your VersaTrans routing application needs, I'm your guide to go to. And I'd like to say thank you for partnering with us and, you know, thinking about continuing and growing your partnership. So Greg honestly hit the nail on the head, but to dive a little bit deeper into what exactly you guys are looking at acquiring is, uh, you know, so Tyler Drive and the student tracking, let me start there. Touched upon the live GPS. That is going to increase transparency and accountability throughout your district because Greg mentioned the reporting functionality and that is actually the on-screen light item you see. And that's going to allow you to do certain things and actually take that data that is tracked with the live GPS and report upon it, right? That's where you can find things and report upon things such as contact tracing, student ridership. We all know it's important to track who rides the bus, but most importantly, who's not riding the bus? Let's really get accurate load counts and help transportation have an accurate load count for their routes, right? You can also track GPS location. Did the driver drive the route that was planned or did they drive a different route? Vehicle history, idle time, and overall, you can really track your fleet costs and generate the biggest ROI with this soft- software application piece right here. Now, with the student ridership piece intact that Greg mentioned, it is actually an RFID card like this, if you can all see it. The student would swipe on and swipe off the bus, uh, with that card. And the most important thing I want to note here is that this capability gives any driver any route at any time. And why I say that is this card is gonna not only alert the bus and record when a student gets on or off the bus, but what happens when little Johnny gets on the wrong bus? This actually provides an audible invisible alert to the driver. This provides an audible invisible alert when they get off the wrong stop. So it's really gonna have a lot of those checks and balances with the driver shortage, allowing for any driver to drive any route. Because with this tablet, it pops up pertinent student information such as their name, their grade, and then really translates all that data and makes it easy and feasible for any driver to utilize. On top of that, one thing that Greg didn't mention, so with the software pieces you're looking at, there's also a parent application included for no additional cost. So now with that scan data, you actually have the ability for that to be pushed over to the parent application. So you can see when your son or daughter swiped on the bus, where they swiped on and what time, and vice versa, when they got off the bus. So the whole goal here is increasing transparency while still maximizing your taxpayer dollars and getting that ROI back that you look for. To elaborate a little further with these tablets, you actually have the ability to do a post and pre-trip inspection. So now you can take accurate information of how your bus is aged, right? Cause in the world of transportation, it's not always the oldest bus that costs you the most money. On top of that, you can monitor driver time and attendance as well as aid time and attendance to really record, you know, how much it's costing you to feed people on the bus. And you also can have and had a, have a added in buffer, for example, to not let people sign in more than five minutes early. Um, there's a, another piece called E-Link in here as well, and this is really what communities love. So E-Link is pretty much a portal into the VersaTrans suite. Like Greg mentioned before, it's gonna give your community, uh, information, the student routing information. So instead of your district having to mail out postcards with the routing information is, now it's all at your fingertips. You can log in through E-Link, which is a browser-based application and see your son's route information when they get picked up, any print information such as that. You can also send transportation messages, right? Do you have an address change? You're able to take and actually send transportation a message quick and easy. And you guys can correspond back and forth in regards to what changes need to be made. Additionally, there's a transportation search. This is great for families that are moving or prospective families to check what school their children want to go to. This is really gonna decrease parents needing to call into transportation because all the information, like nowadays, is right at their fingertips on their computer, on their smartphone. And lastly, just jumping back into the MyStop routing application that you're gonna get, it's gonna give you your pertinent student information and their routing data on your smartphone. I'm sure we all have smartphones here. The ETA is updated every five seconds to reflect traffic and/or other delays and also integrates with our other programs. So with that being said, does anyone have any questions in the capabilities of Tyler Drive, the reporting aspects, or anything I could help clarify?
Yes, this is Dean Beckstrom. I've got a question. How are these fobs secured?
What the students use to scan on and off the bus with?
Yes.
So that's really on a per-district basis. I know there's districts that actually have the employee, you know, the employee badge hooks that some people wear to swipe in and out of the buildings. They put those on their backpacks. Or with the older kids, they usually like to put them in their wallets. In what re- in what regards were you asking that? Did you wonder how they're secured? Or we really leave that up to the district on how you want to implement that?
Yeah, my problem is some of these kids could lose them. They could drop them. They could fall out of their backpacks.
Okay, that's, that's a very good question. So, and we could also speak about districts. They, um, put into place certain policies, monetary policies on lost cards. For example, first lost card is five dollars, the second is twenty. And I can tell you, out of all the districts I've spoken with across the nation, seems to be that magic number where, you know, kids start magically remembering their card. And you can use your justification too. Which student actually forgot their card and which student put it in the washer? But to circle back, I beta-tested our tablets and these cards in various districts and the younger students never lose their cards because they love seeing their ID pop up on the screen they swipe. And the older kids, for example, your high schoolers all have wallets, right? They all have cars, they have jobs. So they take and just put it in there like they would any old credit card. And the retention for these cards is quite astounding to what the, um, the idea would be.
Hey, this Superintendent Cohen, can you put their card on their, uh, smartphone?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
I, I have a question, uh, Mr. President. It's Tom Courtney. I have, I have a question. Is that alright?
Yep, go ahead, Tom.
Andrew, uh, that, this sounds pretty good for older kids, but do you have trouble where you've had it with young kids, the, uh, first grade, second grade, those, those ages of kids? Do you have trouble with them being able to, to do this system? And does it slow the driver down, helping them? And, and those kinds of issues is what I have. Can you, can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, that's a very good question. And quite honestly, no. If anything, it is the same pace and speed as when kids loaded on before. You know, it's quite simple and easy. Remember when you walked up those stairs to the bus, you went to take your left to get into the seat? It's as simple as you're walking up the stairs, take your card, ping, you walk to your seat. The little kids, like I said before, love when they scan, it pops up with a big picture on the screen saying the student is, uh, swiped on. They love seeing it. I've quite honestly never seen younger kids love looking at technology. I mean, their picture pops up on a big bright screen. They love seeing it. They're the ones who actually have their cards ready to go.
So, so if they don't have their card ready to go, what have you done in other systems? Does the driver say, no, I'm sorry, you can't get on this morning? Or what happens there?
So, uh, actually on the tablets, there's a manual load button where the t- the driver can take and just manually load the student on.
Alright, that answers that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And that goes for swiping off as well. The driver can manually unload students as well.
And so they'll have to stop at the door and, and badge off when they leave, is that right?
If you choose to, yes. It's capability for scan on and scan off.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, this is Deb Had- Hadaberg. Um, Andrew, how much training will our drivers need to, um, have to be able to work these tablets and understand the program?
So that all depends on the person that you have learning the tablet, for example. One thing I highly recommend is find someone who goes out and gets the latest and greatest technology, for example, the newest iPhone. You really want to get your driver buy-in in that water cooler talk and have them really, uh, gain each other's buy-in. But for the most part, circling back to your question and how long to take to utilize and learn the tablet, not very long at all, at all. It's a pretty efficient system to use. Big buttons, we made everything, uh, easy, for the lack of better words, with realizing that, hey, we're gonna have people who age ranges from twenty-one all the way up to our senior citizens who, you know, may have some experience, no experience, or extensive experience with tablets. These are sort of a, a one solution fits all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is Kendall. Got a quick question. So the county is, in our, our area where the buses are, are operating is vast. Um, the city has hills, valleys, cliffs. Uh, I'm looking for an answer on, on how thoroughly you've researched to make sure there's, there's coverage. Are there, are there holes or there areas where we could have gaps, delays in reporting because there's not, uh, a sufficient signal, uh, to let the bus know where it's at or the, let the system know where the bus and the kids are at?
Yep, very good question. So as you can see in the proposal, this works off a Verizon 4G network. It works off cellular ta- ta- towers as well as a satellite GPS signal. So two sources of signal there coming in. And one unique capability with Tyler Drive is it actually doesn't stop collecting data when it does not have signal in that sort of God forbid scenario. So you drive into a dead zone and then drive out. Once you drive out, that data is still gonna be transmitted to the system itself, so you're not gonna have any data loss whatsoever. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is, uh, Board Member Siren. Had a question on, um, the, the, the district level, working with us on, on optimizing routes and some of that. What does that, uh, process look like?
So really what optimizing routes, you know, that's a good question first off. And second, it could look like a few things. So with on-screen comes plan versus actual. You always have those routes you plan, right? But then, what are the drivers actually doing? And maybe it's a mix of two that you can go and optimize your routes. Maybe you have a set route planned, but your driver's driven the same route for twenty years and maybe they know a little better than you that, for example, uh, you know, three-thirty PM at dismissal time, taking a left on Main Street isn't efficient because there's traffic and it's dangerous. You can see that within the software, actually have that, um, intelligent and transparent discussion, hey, why did you do this? And then you can actually optimize your route because optimization for us mainly first off is always safety and second off is, you know, efficiencies and really bringing return with the taxpayer. Does that answer what you meant?
It, it, it does some. So it's, it's not a, at the end of the first year, data gets crunched of ridership and everything. It's more just the data is available for our district to, to dive into more on our own.
If you'd like to, yeah, yep. And within on-screen, all that data is collected and stored there. So you can, there's a bunch of, uh, pre-generated reports in which you can take and see, but then you also have the ability to create your own report based off the data within the software itself.
Yeah, Andrew, this is Tom Courtney again. Is that, uh, when, when you said he, maybe it took a, took a ill-advised turn on, on Main Street or something, is that in real time? Do we get that back in real time or is that something you look at the next day and see that?
Real time. So within our, uh, on-screen, which is our, uh, AVL software with all the reporting and receiver vehicles are, you can create these things called geo-fences, right? And those geo-fences are little circles on the map or polygons on the map, for lack of better words, where if your bus drives through, you're gonna get an alert. You can also see on the map in real time, is your bus speeding? Is it off path? Is it doing anything it shouldn't do? I know a lot of, uh, departments like to actually get a flat screen and put up on-screen on their flat screen in their office so they can have a full transparent view of what their fleet is doing in real time.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I do have a question. This is, um, Vice President McVeigh about the cards, um, that the students would receive. Is there, I'm seeing a cost here. Is there a cost to parents to have that card is my first question. And then the second part of that question is if a student loses their card, um, like I'm sure my middle schooler will do, is there a fee for me to, for replacing it?
So for the first part to that question, the parents wouldn't receive the card. Well, you can give the cards to the parents to give to the students if you want, but that is the cost right then and there. There's no, I guess, additional cost hidden in there. And, uh, second off, when in regards to, can you restate the second part of that question, please?
Yeah, so my-
Just wanna make it clear.
That's okay. My student loses their card. It's a lost card.
Yep.
Do I have to pay another fee or a fee to get a replacement card? Like, is there a five-dollar replacement card fee or a ten-dollar replacement card fee?
Okay, good question. So the box is actually coming in quantity of two hundred. So it all depends on what the district and you guys actually in itself want. Now, we can provide you replacement cards if you need boxes, replacement cards. But this is initial, is just to get you up and running, make sure that, you know, you have all the bases squared. And then, you know, leave room for you to come back in the future saying, I'd like to add on this.
Thank you.
And, oh, and to replace individual cards, that could be a district policy as well on what you want to charge per, you know, lost card.
If, if I could ask one more question, Andrew, and I, I promise I'll try not to ask anymore, but, um, it, it, or I don't want to get too much in the weeds here, but how, how many schools do you, do you service now with this system? And I ask that because, you know, uh, some of us are just old country boys and we might have trouble. Some of our folks might have trouble making this system work because it's a new deal. Uh, how, how have you, if you could talk about for a minute, how, how it's worked out in other systems?
Are you, are you speaking in regards to this whole suite or just the tablets in itself?
I'm talking about the whole suite. How, how does it work with? How's it work? You know, I know you probably do a lot of small schools, big schools, rural schools, urban schools. How's it generally being accepted by, uh, many of our drivers are older folks. How's it being accepted by that group?
Quite honestly, it's the older drivers that love it. You, I, I for excel, I've never would have expected it. When I went and beta-tested these tablets, the old drivers were sort of like, what is this on my bus? I've driven this route for so many years. But then once they came and realized that, hey, now they have all the student information in front of them, every single student and every single stop, it pops up. When they get on the bus, they can address any student by their first name, like they've seen them before, give that student confidence. Yeah, it's fantastic. I mean, it's the amount of buy-in you see from the older drivers is fan- is great. It's the younger drivers, it sort of takes some more getting used to because when they get on a bus, they don't really anticipate a tablet being there. But from top to bottom, I mean, I, I can say that the state of South Carolina is rolling out with this solution from, for all, I mean, out of its school districts. First student is putting forty-four thousand of these tablets on all their fleet across America. I mean, it's fantastic to see the buy-in with this new technology.
Thank you very, very much, Andrew.
Thank you.
One question as well, not that I would expect you to know this, but have, have other districts you've worked with, uh, seen any savings on insurance?
On insurance? Ooh, that's a good one. Um, so I know districts have utilized and found cost savings, but not through insurance. Like a deck, I'm gonna take a note of that and try to, and find out for you. What kind of insurance do you, do you mean?
I, I was just looking at, at if we have the data that Better Able shows, um, that this bus wasn't speeding, that, that these, that we know that, that we can show that our route wasn't at fault or things like that, if, auto insurance and, and liability on, uh, on the bus fleet, uh, would, would be cheaper.
That's quite a good question. And I mean, you could, you could take the stance where you assume if you can prove that your drivers are consistently being responsible on the roads, there should be some wiggle room in that aspect. But another great point you brought up is you're gonna know when the buses are speeding. So now, it's really gonna help you back your staff and back your department. When a, when someone calls in or has a question or concern, hey, this bus may have been speeding, you now have the ability to pull up that bus that exact time, see if they're speeding, see if they stopped. It's gonna increase transparency from your operation tenfold all the way up from bottom to top.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, I have a question for either Pat or Greg. I don't know if you want to wait until if Andrew's, uh, finished, so I respect his time, but I do have a question for, for either Pat or Greg.
Um, go ahead now and then, um, I think we'll be ready for a motion at some point here.
Okay. Uh, and then this is again, I'm not sure who this question goes to, whether it's Pat or Greg, or perhaps even Corey. Um, will these be installed on the vans that we use for, uh, sometimes for sports? Um, not necessarily used for picking up kids and taking them to and from school.
Uh, first question was that. Second question is, we have the transportation that we provide for Notre Dame students. Will they uh also be participating in this? Is there a way to share the cost with with that uh, for for having this with uh, those who who use our bus services?
Yeah, I can address that. No, at this point, we're only looking at installing the GPS systems on the buses. And uh, just for note, you mentioned activity trips. That's one of the other advantages with this is we we can now put in all the activity trips into the GPS, which will assist drivers in in knowing where to go. As far as Notre Dame students, um, not real concerned with that. We typically only transport, you know, maybe four or six students, so uh, very small in proportion to the number of riders that we typically have, so.
Yeah, this is Superintendent Cohen. We would want to give Notre Dame the pass just to our students because the second that kid gets on our bus, we're responsible for them. So we want to make sure that we know they got on and we know they got off and and uh, we've done our part as far as due diligence and what's expected.
Absolutely. Each of the Notre Dame students would would be given the FOBs also and the parents also that information, but uh, as far as addressing the sharing of the cost, you know, it's pretty insignificant as far as the number of uh non-public students that ride our buses, so.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Any further questions for Andrew?
Yep, this is Cohen again. I've got I've got one. So can you ping the card?
Ping the card as in?
As in GPS, ping it, know where it's at. A kid, uh, every year or several times, we'll have a kid, nobody knows where they're at, they went home with a friend, you know, whatever. But we cannot ping the card?
So you can't ping the card because it's an RFID card, not attached to GPS, but so when a student swipes on or off a bus, like I spoke about before, it will alert you to if they got on the wrong bus or if they're getting off at the wrong stop. So say a student tries to swipe off at the wrong stop, pull a quick one on the sub-driver, it's actually gonna pop up an audible alert on their screen saying, hey, little Johnny is not supposed to get off at this stop. This is the incorrect stop.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that this is a um, a good thing to have. It sounds like it's a safety net for our transportation drivers. Um, so if there's no other questions, I would like to make a motion that um, we approve the purchase of the VersaTran Transport Suite.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Hadaberg?
Any further, or any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we will uh, go into a vote. Uh, Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Director Courtney?
Uh, yes.
Uh, Director Hadaberg?
Yes.
Director Holson?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
Director Vikström?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, I guess one further question, then what, when is installation and uh, um, now that it's approved, when would children riding buses expect to see this technology?
Um, best bet would to be tested out and get trained upon it within March. So the great thing is about partnering with Tyler this early is you have your pick of training and installation dates. And so I would say best bet is you maybe maybe give it a shot during summer school if you run summer school, but anticipated training, get up and running with the flow of rollout of upcoming school year.
Great. Thank you very much. Looking forward to get it started.
Thank you for increasing your partnership with Tyler. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Board Policy 711 dot 13, School Transportation Safety Instruction, First Reading. Um, and uh, Lacy?
Good evening. Yes, in front of you is uh, policy for school transportation and safety instruction. This policy has been updated to reflect changes in the Iowa Administrative Code, which mandate when the safety training would occur um, and how long documentation of the training will be stored. And so we, the recommended action is that you would approve the first reading of Board Policy 711 13.
Is there a motion?
I will make the motion to approve Board Policy 711 point 13.
A second?
I'll second it.
Holson, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, we will go to a roll call vote. Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Director Courtney?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Director Hadaberg?
Yes.
Director Holden?
Yes.
Yes. Director Vikström?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, next is Board Policy 711 dot 14, uh, School Bus Passenger Restraints. Lacy, back to you.
Yes, this is a new policy that has been created in response to the changes and under the Iowa Administrative Code, which uh, requires school districts to purchase buses with the three-point lap shoulder belts uh, when we purchase new additional buses. The Administrative Code changes also requires all district to have a policy in place requiring the use of those belts uh when provided in the new buses that we purchase. So the recommended action would be to approve the first reading of Board Policy 711 14.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Director Courtney, is there a second?
Second.
I think Director Hadaberg got in there. Any discussion on Board Policy 711?
Mr. Siren, I have a question. Uh, Lacy is
Absolutely.
Lacy, uh, could you just, I don't know this and I should know this. How many buses do we have with belts?
I, Greg might have a better idea of that in terms of um, how many that we've purchased. Greg, can you help with that question?
Yes, we currently have two buses that are equipped with the seat belts. Uh, of course, the the preschool kids all ride with the seat belts. Um, the special ed buses as needed are equipped, and then the board also just approved the purchase of two buses that will be delivered in July of next year that will have seat belts. So as we continue to update our fleet, um, each of the, we typically buy two buses a year. Each of those will be equipped with seat belts.
So this time next year, we'll have four buses with belts in the route, right?
That is correct.
Uh, are we, do we know yet? Are we having good luck of getting kids to put them on where? Anybody? I mean, do we know? Are we having, getting them to wear them?
No, it'll be a new experience for us. Obviously, you know, the preschool kids are all required to wear them. Um, I'm not aware of any issues. It'll be, you know, an educational process for for the students for next year.
Well, this is a critical issue to me. That's why I'm asking a lot about it. It's really critical. And I've seen those films, kids bounce all over those buses uh, like ping pong balls and ping pong balls, and it just, we need to to come up with a way to make them all.
Yes, and they, it will be part of our
When they run their bats through, they get on the bus, then they ought to be able to hook their belt up and be set to go, so.
Right. It'll be part of our transportation um rules for students with, you know, the coordinating discipline, you know, if they don't wear the seat belts according with the policy, then they'll the uh, discipline policies will come into place.
Greg, if I can, for a second, um, you know, I just, I I don't anticipate having any major issues with this once we teach the expectation, just like with any other expectations we have in school. And I would, I'd refer you back to masks this year. I think, you know, this last summer, we had a lot of conversations about what if students refuse to wear masks? What if they won't put their mask on? And 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 we haven't seen that. Students know the new expectations, they they follow the rules. If they forget, they they comply with a simple reminder um, a vast majority of the time. So I wouldn't anticipate any major significant issues as long as we're being consistent with it.
I just have to tell you all that. I've been waiting on this moment ever since I was on the board before. And for for 15, 20 years, I've been waiting for this moment. We we've always needed seat belts. It looks like we're finally gonna get down the road. I think there'll be a lot of lives to be saved if we ever have a tragic accident. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The, Owen, the only thing I would add to that is a private law, every time they get in their mom and dad's car, they have to buckle up. So I think the majority of the kids will already be uh, used to it and it's transferable practice knowledge. So I don't anticipate problems. And we do see uh, the kids utilize the buckles for the little guys. No, I'm in the same thing with our, uh, some of our special needs children. It works very well.
Yeah, I I really hope you're right, Mr. Cohen. I think this is just, this is gonna be great. I'm really happy about it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, we'll vote on Board Policy 711 dot 14. Uh, Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Yes.
Director Courtney?
By all means.
Director Hadaberg?
Yes.
Director Holson?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
Director Vikström?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. Um, all right, now we're on to the Early Childhood Center Care Professional Job Description. Cory, I believe this one's yours.
Uh, yep, and I think Brian's on this evening too. Uh, what we have before you on this uh, particular item and then the item after this is the job descriptions for uh, new positions that need to be created to staff the childcare portion of the Early Childhood Center. Um, the board has had multiple, you know, we've we've given you a lot of information and you've been very supportive of of startup for the Early Childhood Center, and we're still on track, and Brian's doing a great job of of having us on track to open this center um, either, you know, this summer or at least at latest for next, at the beginning of next school year. Um, so the two positions here are are the new classifications or new job titles that are necessary in order to run uh, that Early Childhood Center. So Brian, if I missed anything, jump in there.
No, you didn't.
All right. Well, first, we're just looking at the uh, childcare professional job description. Is there a motion?
Uh, so move. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Director Hadaberg. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think Director Vikström got in there, so uh, uh, we have a motion and seconded. Any discussion on the uh, childcare professional position?
Turn that light back on. That's my light.
Yes, this is Hadaberg. I um, wondered, how many are we anticipating hiring to begin with? And I know you, you know, it depends on the numbers of kids, but how many uh, professionals are we planning on hiring to begin with?
Hi, this this is Brian. You you are correct. It depends on the the number of kids that we have, since I did give an approximate, you know, two scenarios. Uh, we would have both full-time and part-time childcare professionals. Uh, the lowest number we we possibly have is looking at full-time staff at least 10 to 12. Um, but then you'd have some part-time staff as well. Uh, because that would be one uh, for the four-year-olds, uh, two for the two-year-olds, and then you need a couple for the threes and fours as well. And then you'd have part-time staff as well.
Sure.
It could, it could be anywhere from 10 to 12, uh, you know, as much as 20.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I had a question, um, just um, they'll report to you as the principal. Um, and then the uh, the onsite supervisor provided, we'll get to that one in a bit, falls in between as as just onsite, or or could you explain that relationship, please?
Yeah, that's correct, uh, Joel. Um, so in my roles, principal, I would also serve as the director of the childcare. That way we can throw those roles into one role. Uh, because I am in charge of the preschool as well, with both the threes and the fours, and also the childcare hours will go much longer than a traditional day, going from usually 6:30 to 6:00. Um, you'd have the onsite supervisor to be opposite of me. So for instance, if I opened and went most of the day, the onsite supervisor could come in later and go the rest of the day. Uh, the other thing there is that typically in childcare, you may have a position that, you know, somebody's sick or something like that, and you don't have the subs. So you may have that person go into a room and cover that room. That doesn't pull me out of the room. It pulls then, or pulls me into a room. It pulls that onsite supervisor. So they would work hand in hand. Um, and there is DHS requirements for both me as a director slash principal and also the onsite supervisor that they'd have to meet those requirements. But you do need to have a supervisor at all times. So if I wasn't there because I worked 6:30 to 4:00, for that 4:00 to 6:30, someone needs to be there that's a supervisor role.
Thank you.
So I know this is really not the supervisor that we're talking about, but it just kind of all goes together. So we do not have like a second person for preschool then? It's just, it's just the one onsite supervisor that would, would would that person have anything to do with the preschool, really, at all?
Thanks for the question. Uh, no, they they wouldn't. They would just be, the onsite supervisor would just be the childcare.
Okay.
I would be both, and they would just be the childcare.
Thank you.
And Brian did a nice job of going through that, of course. The, the one thing that he mentioned and just want to reiterate that the that distinction is part of the DHS Childcare Center Licensing Regulation, so that that title is in the, that childcare centers, uh, that onsite supervisor, as well as the director titles are both in the um, the licensing regulations from DHS.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, um, we will go to a vote on the Early Childhood Center Care Professional uh, position. Uh, Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Director?
Yes.
Director Hadaberg?
Yes.
Holson?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
And Director Vikström?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, next, we can a motion for the Early Childhood Center Onsite Supervisor Position.
I will make a motion that we approve as presented for the Early Childhood Center Onsite Supervisor.
I second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and seconded. Any um, uh, further discussion or further uh information for, from uh, Mr. Johnson or Mr. Baker? Seeing none from them. Any uh, other discussion from the board? Seeing none. Uh, we'll move into a vote on the Early Childhood Center Onsite Supervisor Position. Uh, Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Director Courtney?
Yes.
Director Hadaberg?
Yes.
Director Holson?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
And Director Vikström?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, now on to the Administrative Pay Equity. Uh, Mr. Cohen, I will turn it over to you.
As we discussed during a previous meeting, um, every three or four years, we have Greg run numbers to make sure that we are not violating our own policies on uh concerning uh, pay to protected class of citizenry. Uh, the two that jumped out at me were in that area, middle school principal. Um, she was 22.5% below the average of uh, 10 schools above and 10 below. And therefore be appropriate that we would uh, adjust her pay. And then also HR was uh, 17.6%. Those are by far the largest. And uh, so we wanted to adjust her pay. And then the the third one that doesn't fall into a class of protected citizenry but is a discrepant is Mr. Reynolds, that business officer. Um, he is a state leader in uh, the Board of Directors and Treasurer for the Iowa Association of School Boards. Um, he is the, on the Advisory Committee for Iowa State University for School Business Authorization Program. And he does have over he does have over seventeen years of service. So, uh, him being low, um, isn't necessarily okay either. And, uh, so those were the only three that I found that I thought deserved consideration for wage correction. And the, uh, the idea is to give each one of those individuals a $10,000 bump.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Um, is, uh, is there a motion? Uh, and what we would need here, uh, for a motion is we would need a motion to take this off of the table. Then we would discuss and vote just to take it off the table. Then we would be able to discuss it as a motion. Um, but right now it's on the table. We would need a successful vote to take it off of the table before we could, uh, really get into discussing the merits of the, uh, of the motion itself.
Don't move.
So we have, we have the table. Is there a second?
I will second.
All right, Director McVeigh, um, any discussion for taking this off the table? Seeing none, uh, to, to, was you gonna take a vote just to pull this off the table, not to approve the motion itself? Uh, Director McVeigh, or Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Uh, Director Courtney? Tom, you were muted there.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
Uh, Director Hatterburg?
Yes.
Director Holton?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
Director Vikström?
Yes.
All right, so, uh, motion passes. Um, the, uh, HR, uh, administrative pay equity is now off the table. So now we're able to discuss the motion, um, as presented. Any discussion?
One question. How did Mrs. Butler get so far behind and who did it?
Mrs. Butler was brought in, uh, when we had issues with other principals. Uh, she moved to, uh, to Edward Stone. Uh, she agreed to the, uh, her original, her current salary. And, um, who did it? Um, I'll take the, uh, I'll own that. Um, but it didn't become, we didn't become aware of this until we have Greg run the comparisons. And that's when we, uh, the discrepancy, uh, became evident.
I, I have a question, uh, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Well, the first thing is I, 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 I'm disappointed that we're so far behind on these folks and I don't want anyone to think for a moment that I don't think everyone on this list deserves a raise because I do. But I, I, I am upset that, that they got so far behind. I've seen this before. And that's why you guys get the big bucks to keep up with this, Mr. Cohen, and you ought to keep up with this. And I'm not very happy about that. The other question is, you, you're saying that, uh, Principal Butler is, is a, is a twenty-two percent behind. What percentage of increase are we talking about tonight? I, I didn't, I couldn't make that out from what I have in front of me. So can someone tell me that? But how much of that twenty-two percent are we trying to make up tonight?
Uh, ten percent. We think that's in line with her years of service.
Yeah. Well, I've seen this before. Boards get behind and, and then when it comes to make up time, this is a terrible year to be making this up. I, I've had a lot of discussions with, with folks and, and, and I, you know, maybe it's gotta be done this year. But it's a terrible time to do it. We should not have gotten in this situation and it should not ever happen again. We, you have to keep them up. Every year you have to go through, through everybody and look at them and, and make sure that we're, we're up to snuff. It's happened, it happened, it's always happened with high school principals especially. It always happens with. We hire them and, and, and then we're, we don't, we don't give them raises and here, suddenly we're in this mess. I don't like it. I'm not happy with it, but we may be stuck with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I do have a question, um, for Greg. So obviously this is going to be an added expense that we didn't anticipate. Have we had savings this year at all because of the COVID? I understand we've had a lot of expenses, but have we had any savings that would maybe offset this at least for this year? Can you speak to the financial aspect of all this?
Yes, be glad to answer that. You know, obviously with, you know, the unanticipated increase with the, with the budget expenditure, the district, you know, routinely, uh, in, incurs unanticipated expenditures. Obviously, you know, the COVID's a big part of it. Um, you know, we, we also have other, you know, personnel-related expenditures, you know, lane changes that we grant twice a year that we typically don't budget for, those types of things. Um, and yes, there have been some savings, uh, in the district as a result, you know, with the school closures, you know, with the not in-person, you know, substitute costs are down, some of the utility costs are down. Um, also want to note, we also worked very hard, you know, the last three years, we've, uh, improved our miscellaneous income to over $200,000 a year with, you know, the implementation of the equipment breakdown policy, um, district rentals, those types of things, you know, I'm looking at, you know, uh, possible another miscellaneous income this year of around 60,000 and I think will come to fruition through an application that, um, I made with FEMA. So yeah, we do our best, um, to look for savings, identify savings, you know, improve miscellaneous income. And, uh, we're used to making budgetary adjustments as needed each year, uh, as things like this nature arise.
Thank you for a good explanation.
Yep, this is going. Uh, the only thing I've had is I believe we're right at $70,000 a month for substitutes. And we didn't pay for any substitutes in March, April, or May and during this most recent shutdown. So there, there is substantial, uh, general fund that has not been paid out.
This is Holson. Um, I would like to speak a little bit about other salaries in the general, um, teaching that we have, the teachers that we have. Um, they have been frozen at the step they were on four years ago. And when we lost collective bargaining, three years or four years, I'm not sure. But people have, um, contacted me and said that they could be stuck at first year, maybe that was their first year of teaching. And so they're stuck at first year, then somebody comes along and gets hired for a, a same kind of job they have that maybe has three years of experience. So they start at the third step. So they make more money than somebody else that's been here for three years. I'm not sure that's real equitable. And I hope in the near future, we can remedy some of those, um, situations. Otherwise, I'm not opposed to, um, giving raises to our administrators. Thank you.
One more question. This is Vikström. Do we normally make salary adjustments in the middle of the year?
I will answer that one, Mr. Vikström. Um, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Reynolds, uh, presented, uh, the, these two, uh, Vice President McVeigh and myself. And in discussing it, we felt we could have waited until the June 30th, but we decided to move ahead and put it on the agenda now. Um, it's one of those where when an inequality is brought to our attention, the time to fix it is when it's brought to your attention. Uh, and so that was our decision, uh, to, to move ahead with that at this time.
Yes, and I can also add to that, Dean, your question. Yeah, it's not uncommon. Typically, you know, at two times a year, uh, in September and February, uh, we are presented with lane changes by the teaching staff. And so it's not uncommon for us on average to, uh, adjust the salaries of teachers, probably twenty-five to thirty teachers a, a year on an average with lane changes throughout the year. So it's not uncommon for us to make salary changes through the year.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, this is Kendall. I got a couple comments, uh, if I might.
Go ahead.
First of all, let me emphatically state that the individuals and the positions that we're talking about are exceptional in their jobs. Um, I'm very pleased with what I have seen, uh, as a board member and as a member of the community, uh, with the performance of, of all of these individuals. That said, um, I, I want to address Mr. Courtney's comments. Uh, it is unfortunate that we have fallen behind and that we do fall behind. But you have to understand as a former board member who served for many years before, we are always trying to maximize what we have with the minimum amount of costs. We want qualified, uh, professional, competent, uh, beyond competent individuals in our positions. But we have to always be looking at what it's costing, not just in terms of salary, but also in terms of benefit packages, uh, insurance, retirement, time off, et cetera. And the state has not always been kind to us with funding. It wasn't too many years ago, we had a governor who had an across-the-board cut in the middle of the year. And those are exceptionally painful things to deal with. And when we're looking at trying to minimize class sizes to keep teachers from having twenty-eight to thirty students in a classroom, if we can trim some dollars off somewhere else in order to keep the class sizes down, I think that's our obligation to try and do that. It's not my intention to, to have anybody come up short when it comes to, to their compensation. But I think we always have to be aware of the big picture and not just are we keeping up with the Joneses, so to speak, uh, in terms of salary. Burlington has, has time and time again in the last five years, but identified as one of the lowest cost of living communities in the country. The dollar power, the dollar, the power of your, your dollar, spending dollar here in Burlington is, is much, much higher than anywhere else in this country. And we've been identified as that. So that said, the timing of this is absolutely beyond terrible. We are, uh, at a period where small businesses are struggling, people are getting laid off. And I'm very, very frustrated with the timing. I feel like this could have better, been better served, uh, later in the year. And, and so I respectfully disagree with you, Mr. President, on the timing of this. I will not stand in the way of this because I do think it's necessary, but I can certainly understand why people will probably be and rightfully be quite upset about this. Um, this $30,000 is not a one-time expense. It will compound itself in the coming years and it will cost more than $30,000 next year. So I understand why we're doing it, but I, doesn't mean I have to like it. That is all.
Mr. President, I have one more thing. Um, I, I assume we're gonna go with this night and, and I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Reynolds and Superintendent Cohen, uh, to address, uh, after this meeting, what Ms. Holson has brought up tonight. This is, if, if we have, if that's happening to teachers, if we have teachers that are not getting their raises because of when they started and we have other teachers coming in behind that are ahead of them, that is just as inequitable as this. And that needs to be addressed at once. And if, if this passes tonight and we're starting to get on the road to get these three folks more equitable, then I would, I would ask you both to go immediately, and I know you're busy, to go immediately into the, into the records and, and, and look and see where we're at and everybody else. I don't want this to happen again. This is crazy that this happened and I don't want it to happen again. So I would really like you to do that. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Just as a reminder, we are discussing the motion at hand, not any motions that may be on the agenda in the future.
Certainly, I understand that, but I also understand that this all goes together. That's how we got in this mess, Mr. President. And I'm not, I'm not making a motion. I'm just saying it all needs to be looked at. I'm not making a motion. That would be for another meeting. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion?
And if I may, just for the record real quick on that item, I know we don't want to go too far into it, but we, we have looked at our base teacher salaries and our other forms of compensation and found that as a district, we are, um, at this point equitable, but also all of that falls within the collective bargaining, uh, between the district and the, the board and the BEA. So any of those topics would, would relate to, would relate to the bargaining piece as well.
This is Holson. Yeah, you're right. It is collective bargaining time. And when we negotiate this next time, I just hope that people will be open to looking at that. That's all I was asking. Thank you.
One comment. I would hope that we would look at these salaries every year now rather than wait and see these things happen again. This should be an ongoing process of salary administration.
Thank you, Mr. Vikström. Excellent point. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, we'll move into a roll call vote on the, uh, Human Resources Administrative Pay Report, uh, that has come off the table. Um, Vice President McVeigh?
Yes.
Director Courtney?
Yes.
Director Hatterburg?
Sorry, yes.
Director Holton?
Yes.
Director Kendall?
Yes.
Director Vikström?
Yes.
Motion passes. Um, at this point, I wanted to turn it over to Vice President McVeigh just for, um, uh, an unfortunate announcement to make.
So we just learned tonight that, um, our very own Lily Timmerman has passed away. So, um, you know, obviously our hearts are heavy and they're broken. Our thoughts and prayers go out to her family. So we would like to take a moment to have a moment of silence in her recognition, please. Thank you. I will turn it over to President Serin.
Thank you, Vice President McVeigh. Um, I asked her to do that because I, uh, would not have made it through it. So, uh, we will now go to board communication. Uh, and, um, just to give her a little break, we will start with, uh, you, Director Courtney.
I've, uh, talked way too much tonight. So, uh, thanks and, uh, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Director Hatterburg?
Just a big thank you to the staff and the students for this, uh, first few months of the school year. I hope that during your Christmas break, you can actually take some time to rejuvenate and, uh, have some good memories. And then we'll hit it again in January. So Merry Christmas to everyone. Stay safe.
Thank you. Director Holton?
Just want to encourage everyone to stay safe and have a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Director Kendall.
I too wish everybody a very, very Merry Christmas, a very Happy New Year. And it has been a challenging Chan, two thousand and twenty from not only an educational standpoint, but for many of us, just trying to get through daily life. So stay together, stick together, support each other. Uh, we'll see you in 2021.
Thank you. Uh, Director Vikström?
Uh, thank the Lily's family. This is a season that you don't want to go through something like this. Uh, I wish everyone else a Merry Christmas and stay safe and we'll see you afterwards. Thank you.
Vice President McVeigh?
Well, I thought it was very exciting to see all the yellow school buses out on the streets today. So I hope the A-Day students had a great first day back in person. I hope tomorrow the B-Day students have a great day back in.
I hope tomorrow the B-Day students have a great day back in person. And I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Hope you all enjoy the winter break, and you stay safe.
Thank you. For myself, three main takeaways for tonight's meeting. One is the, the continuing decline in population and birth rates for our community and what that means for the long-term impact for our district. Very excited about the continued progress on the Early Childhood Center, moving ahead for 2021. And just as others have said, it's great to be back. Thank you to everyone involved that put tables back in where desks were and got all of the rooms organized for school today. We wanted this meeting to be in person, but we didn't want to ask too much of our technology staff and custodial staff to get the library, not only all of the buildings ready for all of the students, but also ready for us to meet tonight. So I do want to just make that clear that, that we had hoped to, but we will in January get back together in person. I hope everyone has a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season, and would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
And all in favor?
Hi.
We will see you all in 2021. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday season.